And then maybe go revisit it after we get a little bit farther down the road if you guys are okay with that.
Okay, fair enough. Do you have a board party planned for this operation?
I do. Um, I've got two, Neil and Doug were planning on helping me and...
Have you got a date?
Um, no, we don't.
Soon, very soon.
Before golfers in Tree City USA people show up.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Jeff, um, have you figured out the price of the dogwood and where would it go? We talked about that.
Um, no, I didn't check on that, but one of the things we talked about was Neil can get really good price on some larger trees. And for Arbor Day, the thought was maybe we would, uh, on the corner of the golf shack, get a power biz and the wires come in. It might be nice to put a dogwood or something there. Uh, I know Joel has a lot of heart for a mural. I was just hoping that it's either minimal or well done if we're gonna do that. Um, but so one thing was to take Arbor Day, um, tree or, and then plant it there, one of them.
Well, as I said, I said to you before, Mr. Willer and Mrs. Walter Willer would like to nominate that dogwood.
Well, that's, I mean...
So let me know.
Are you going to put a dogwood?
If you look, I think...
On the front corner of the shack or the back of the shack?
Yeah, in the front corner of the shack, the wires come in and then there's a whole power box on the corner. And then there's also a small piece of pavement. I'm not sure what they use that for.
driveway for the, it used to be where the kid that worked there required.
Tinted oak parks there.
Well, let's break it up and we're thinking we should dig it to the next level and that's how, yeah. And, and just because we wouldn't want the tree to be too close. We're looking at possibly a smaller tree. Again, Matt, I'll bring another sheet before you when we get to that stage. Um, and again, if you guys have a, you know, a strong feeling why something should be done or if you got, you know, another thought, definitely that's why I'm doing this and not doing it and then tell me later.
Look, uh, if you're gonna put like on the back side, they basically are understanding the back part of the shack. You know, that, that golf course is almost impossible to see now. If you put a tree there in front of the shack, you won't even see the shack.
Um, not the kind of tree we were talking about. We were, something that is very open, unobtrusive, not that large. It was more designed to, it, it's very, it looks like a shed in the middle of nowhere. And, um, I really do agree with Neil that if we put something, uh, that doesn't go crazy, a little more of a dwarf tree, it would look, it would look good.
What about signage on the building?
I've got a...
Is that one of your things you gotta talk about?
Well, we had a long discussion. I've met with Joel for probably...
Three hours.
Probably three hours. And, um, and, and I love his passion. I'm trying to corral some of his aesthetic decisions or thoughts. Uh, and he's, we're working back and forth. Uh, we, I wanted to...
So you're not for it's what you're trying to tell me, right?
I, um, I'm not for signage the way it was proposed to me.
Which was what?
Which was along the rim of the building and then down the rim. Obviously, if you ever take, tie, if you wanna see a cheap ad on cars or carpet, one of the first things they do is give you angle type. They get smaller and gets larger and that kinda stuff. Uh, I'm not for really putting a lot of verbiage on the building itself. When I had, and a lot of this came out after a long discussion that, um, he kept saying, "I want a figure. I want a figure in this mural." And I'm like, after like two hours, like, "Why do you, why are you stuck on a figure?" Figures are okay, but if you do them slightly wrong, everybody knows it whether they can admit it or not, you know? Oh, that head's too big or who is that? Turns, turns out, and I, it was a really good purpose that I had to dig and find. Uh, he wanted to give tribute to the original designer of the golf course. And so what I had recommended, and I did a Photoshop thing, I would have brought it, I knew this was gonna be the topic. We could have a nice, consistent with our community sign out front, maybe a light graphic on the building. But then we could put this person, and I don't even know his name, I'm sorry, um, person's name and then a little description. If someone sees a fit silhouette on a building, you're not gonna go two and two, oh, that's the golf course designer. I can't put a pencil in his hand. You, you, you know what I mean? The, so what he was after can be accomplished, but I think there's an alternate way to do it.
Is this a famous architect by chance?
I, I don't know. I don't know.
Like an industrialist or something?
I know that, um, he said that his son is still alive in seventy-four and I don't know. There was something about...
He was in his original presentation to us who, who was the designer of the golf course, but I forget his name.
Well, I, I think that's valuable information. It separates us out. I just would want somebody who's coming up to the golf course to appreciate it. I don't think you would make the jump if you saw a figure on the building.
No, here's that. Here's why I'm asking these questions. I want, you know, we get a lot, there's a lot of stuff goes on in Malloy's and a lot of it starts in the afternoon.
Right.
I want everybody that pulls into that lot to see, to know that golf course is there.
Right.
Right now, unless you know it's there, you don't know it's there because the way it's designed, it just drop, we've talked about this before. I want them to be able to say, "Oh, what's that back there? Oh, it's a golf course. Well, I didn't know there was a golf course here."
You need that big golf ball from Golden Tee.
You take the bush down, you put the golf ball there.
You get Jeff to buy all of that.
And to Bud's point, he doesn't care about aesthetics. Um, you know, here's...
I'm a redhead.
No, that's okay. I mean, I, to me, I think aesthetics that don't serve its function is, is art. It's... So I think we need to, it has to serve its function, but there's a lot to be said for something that sends a different message than what we're about. And so if we start putting lettering up the side and down the side on a painted piece of wood that starts to rot and then it falls off and we're not gonna maintain it and, you know, all that stuff sends a message whether we wanna admit it or not. People wanna step up to it. I don't think they have to be wowed and it has to be like frilly or anything, but it needs to be consistent. It needs to be professional. And so to your point, I had recommended a sign and I gathered a whole bunch of examples for him that I feel we need, that we can change the message on. So that he could say, uh, women's lead forming, you know, for anybody who's coming into the parking lot. I, I'm all about the function. Uh, and good design includes the function.
Am I lighting it? Light it sound something?
No, I'm not, I don't even think it should be lighting. What, what, what he was concerned about, it's interesting because, um, the conversation swims in and out on different levels. Um, there are certain things he wants to do that I think are atrocious aesthetically, but then he'll come on and say, "Oh, I don't like those letters you just put on and it looks like, you know, some dinky sign somewhere."
Michael Larson.
So what, what I showed him, I was able to show him, I've done, uh, signs and something we did for the parliamentary procedure group that you can have vinyl make and you slide them in and, and it looks good. The typeface works. We're, we're on that. We're on, I'm trying to help him on that front.
But again, it's something you can see when you start walking in to go to the mall and look out there and know what, what's there.
What, what is a sign that's not legible from that distance?
It's what?
There's, there's no value to a sign that's not legible unless I have to walk up to it. Now, granted, we don't want the side of the building to have four foot letters on it either, but I'm gonna, I'll be putting...
Green Hills Golf Club or Green Hills Golf Course up the side of the building in two foot letters or whatever.
Something to follow me.
Yeah, I, I think we, I...
Smack him in the forehead.
Yeah, I, but it all depends on who our audience is. I mean, young...
Golfers.
Well, younger golfers, their sophistication level's a little higher than smack them on the head. Um, if we're going to...
I drink the most beer on Thursday nights are the young guys. I'm not sure.
Anyways, all, the whole sign, the whole signage piece and all of that will come before you guys in this form as a plan. So let me go on to the next thing. Um, I always say you're as strong as your weakest link.
Yes. You asking for confessions?
No, I'm just saying that, uh...
Handing tips?
To, to your point though, uh, before we deal with some of this other stuff, there are some very distinct weak links in that area. And I think this is one of them and it's a recommendation that came from somebody else. This is right by the entrance of Malloy's. I would really like to see what we could do to get this gate on the front of this. Uh, it just looks bad. You pull up and, and you say, get out of your car and you're not, this isn't even far away from the entrance of Malloy's. Or if you're at the golf course, it's right there too. I think we need to cover it up. Ideally, maybe someday we'll be able to put it around the side or something else. I don't know that.
It's a move.
Yeah. The problem is, um, as it goes to the right, then it's right in front of the, uh, shelter. And, you know, so it's got a bunch of issues, but for now, I think putting a gate across the front of it would help us immensely.
It's conveniently located as it sits, but it's not very pretty. Does it got a budget for this gate? Is it the one?
I don't. I was, that was just running through my head. It's like, I can't make that a recreation thing.
I think we'll have some requirements too. It might have to be a double one that opens and then we'll have to have it stop because cars park near somewhere.
Okay.
And then they won't get out and open a gate either.
No, they won't. So we'll have to open it up.
Well, I, I don't know, but if nothing else, even if it stay, possibly stayed open and we knew we were having an event, like Tree City USA.
We can close it up, yeah.
We can close it up. A good example, a bad good example of this is, uh, the corner Mexican restaurant in Forest Park. Um, I actually, I've actually got contagious about cleaning up trash even out in my own community. If you look at their trash doors, they're open and it's just piles of trash right across from their community building. And, uh, you know, the meat legs.
It's even closed too.
It's been closed.
Yeah, it's closed. Yeah, it's closed, but the gate is there and they just...
Well, people have just taken advantage of that dumpster and of course nobody's paying.
And there's no dumpster, so it's, it's just trash. Yes.
Oh, wow.
And the doors are open and, um, but, and I know this is far cry from that, but I just think that it's something we should address. And I don't have a budget for it, so I don't know if you're in agreement, how we go about making it happen.
Well, I guess the first thing we've gotta do is figure out what, what it, what it needs to be, um, to, to meet Rumpke's, uh, requirements and...
There's not gonna be any requirements for Rumpke. It's just gonna be something that's gonna have to be open when they come at a certain rate.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, is that a treatment term?
Yeah, probably about ten years ago.
Cause it looks like it's leaning right now. Again, if you wanna tie something over the post right there, you know, they have two things. You can put them on rollers. They haven't connected in the middle.
Well, I, the ones I've seen, I'm thinking that it's a double gate that just swings open that you would hinge. Is, is that what you're thinking for it?
Yeah, but I mean, the, the opening of this is, is pretty wide. It's about eight foot wide, isn't it?
Yeah, but if you took two four foot sections.
But two four foot sections, uh, you, you were looking to have some heavy duty hinges where you can put on a roller.
Okay, I got it.
And it can roll out.
I thought you were rolling, a roller door that you're talking about. Well, I, especially for, you know, we have Tree City USA coming up and I don't know. This is one I'd like to resolve if we can.
Is there another location for that? Put that over the south side of the Malloy's?
I think don't even have special panel concrete to handle that heavy equipment.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know if there is. I'm trying to think of... Well, it's a far walk, but at the bottom of the pole, there's dumpsters down there that, um, I know they... Yeah, but that's for the folks that use the... I mean, if we could just take that one down to there.
So it's too far from...
Well, probably most of the stuff that's in it's from Malloy's, obviously. And I was thinking they take it for delivery. Their main kitchen is right there on the...
Sure do.
Their main kitchen is on the south end of that building there.
We, we might wanna reconsider as we get the playground over there and we get some restaurants and it becomes more of a, a hub. You know, at some point, maybe we reconsider, but with the cement pad being there, I just thought that, and it's still a stretch, but the easiest get would be to put some of the doors on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And you'll have to let me, um, I, I can research what needs to be done with Greg's help and...
Yeah, let, let's take it like that on, on Thursday.
Okay, and then we'll have...
Wait, wait, one else to say, I'm gonna leave Mike a note.
Sure.
The council wants a door on this. What are, what are your thoughts? Cause he may have something he can work with.
Yeah, I'd like to design something so it could, it's something that can last a long time and...
You can have an arrow made golf course on it too, right?
Very good idea.
Look behind you, there's a golf course.
Okay, one more on this front and then I add one other small thing of my business. Uh, I, I talked to Mike too, since you had mentioned it, and I guess he's got some hate for it. Uh, there's, um, it wouldn't take much. And again, I'm thinking we've got mayors possibly coming to Tree City USA. We've got a lot of people coming and it's just a good reason to spruce things up. And of the whole area here is starting in bad need of paint. And when you walk down that, that hallway there, um, and you look to the left, I just think just a couple areas that if we address those, we're good for, for now. Another thing that I'd like to consider, us to consider, it's hard to tell in this photograph, but birds love to sit up there and that's bird poop, all, every rail as you walk in. And it, I don't know if it's, for me, it's one of those like, I know there's not a bird there now, but I just think it detracts from it. And even if it's a temporary fix, cause I had, um, talked to Neil about this, I know they have little wire strips you can put up there. And he said that there's actually something that you can paint down. It's like a heat based thing or chemical based thing and birds won't land up there. Um, but I think we should paint that area. I don't think it would take much.
Any injections and, I don't think council needs to approve it and...
I don't know. Maybe that's splitting hairs, but...
But it's, no, I, I, it's a good recommendation and, um, and it's the...
Well, probably after we paint it, we should, I have to get stuff from the call Reese No More.
Okay, yeah.
Um, after we paint it, we should probably put some, otherwise it's gonna just...
It's happening again.
They have it at the, uh, the park, Woods Park, they have the little spikes cause they have the same problem if you go up to the tower.
The nice thing about what Neil was talking about, the Roost No More, is you don't see the spikes. This is, um, this is the entryway down and I just think it would be nice if, if there's a method where it doesn't have spikes above it if we can, we can do that.
Do you, do you think it would be a good idea to kinda cover that up to where it, you don't like to see it inside of the vaulted area?
Possibly.
Because you know, they, they got some vinyl beaded board that you can actually put across there and that can close it up. And it looks like beaded board, but it's vinyl and...
I don't know. It looks a little claustrophobic as it is. I don't know how it would, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, you can actually put some lights in there too.
There's a bunch, I can, there's more.
There's a lot of stuff you could do, but I think we're talking, uh, at least short term, let's, let's get through the, uh, Tree City business and...
But you know, it might be good, Greg, you and I look at it as a point for a longer term and see what things might...
Yeah, cause I think you probably feel claustrophobic when you first walk into the area, but as you go down, then it kinda stays a while.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you another thing that's, I don't know if you can tell, but that's a down spot that runs across there.
Yeah.
And when you come down the steps, that's what you see. It almost looks like you would run into it if you weren't going down the steps. That, that's, that's another issue. Again, these, I know, is it a showstopper? No. But it's all these little things as someone walks into Malloy's that adds up. I, I found a fountain that looks really nice and that can be placed on stone, um, and would not have the maintenance and the leakage problems we have with the pond that fills with leaves and everything. There's a whole bunch of other stuff, but that'll be another layer for another time.
And if I could just add quickly, cause when you're picturing going down into Malloy's, the right-hand side that's, uh, been recently dug up because we had some, uh, water or done on the foundation area, um, Delphi will be replanting that area. Forest that will come for Tree City as well as they'll be doing some bushes along the front, uh, where we had to remove that. Again, that was all part of that trenching for the, for the basement, for the, um, water issue, but we're gonna have that planted as well.
What's the date of Tree City?
Nineteen. What time is it?
Okay, one other thing, sorry, and it's, um, I've been, it's nineteen.
How many days?
Oh, uh, ten thirty. At two.
And there was, you know, I don't know if we wanna go down that route now, but, um, we'll talk later about attendance. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up because I've been contacted a number of times about this and I said that I would bring it up and hear what your guys' opinion is. I think I've mentioned it once before, but a gentleman has contacted me about moving the historical marker that's, um, on the corner.
Southwest corner.
Southwest corner, went in Cromwell. And then, uh, and his thought was that it's not easily accessible, meaning where do you park and take it over to it? I imagine you park in Cromwell, but, um, and I know that I had talked to Terry and she said that it's a cement base that it's in. Um, I'm not recommending we move it. I just thought that there's enough persistence behind it to at least, um, get your guys' feedback. I see pros and cons of doing both. One is if it went over to the common, it is, you know, there's a lot, you know, we're hoping to make it very accessible to the, um, to the monuments so people can appreciate those. And I could see coming across that historical marker and reading that and you could do like a historical walkway. I, I see value in that. But I also see value in people driving up and down Wynton and you see that marker and that's a...
That, that was the intention of putting it on that corner first place, that it's got the wind road visibility up and down every day.
But to his point, you can't tell what it is, you know, it's a marker.
Well, you know it's a historical marker and it, and it says Green Hills, so hopefully you can, if you, you can put that two and two together and if you want to stop, you can. There's the church across the street you can park at, you can park in Cromwell, you can park on Chalmers. You can park at the Commons Walk across the street. Any number of ways to access it.
Well, another, and I agree with you that, uh, one of the things about it is you have, you want, if you wanna measure by poundage, more people will see it and associate it with Green Hills, I believe there than off, you know, on the common cause you have so much traffic going by. Now, there's gonna be so, those people that wanna access it, I would think those are less than the volume that goes to refer.
And if you wanna, it's simple enough and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of people, you go to something unless they can park right in front.
Right, right.
And, sorry.
And just, and I'm brainstorming, I know it's a bizarre thought, it, do they ever duplicate a marker? In other words, could you put one someplace else that...
I don't think so. Uh, that's almost sacrilegious.
Yeah, I think it's...
You could put a mirror across from it. All right. So what did, what, would you, not that I'm voting for a vote, but I mean, any thoughts on...
Any energy to move it?
Well, I don't know if it's energy. I was just looking more for the desire and, and, and I wanted to not influence you guys. I wanted to know your, your vantage point. What do you think?
Many pros and cons.
I like it there.
Pros and cons to both. I like it there as well. Um, if it's on the common side, when we have the events, people are going to actually read it and know more about it. Point taken. That was his point. Um, but I was all for still the, uh, west side of Wynton being more village center. And I think bringing it over, that takes away, I, I like it that it kinda spreads it out. I, I like the word that.
Is there one other final question? Sorry. Is there, with the historic designation, is there any plaque or information that gets publicly posted for, for that?
For Enchell.
For Enchell.
For what? Do they give you a plaque?
No, I don't, no, I don't know. I mean, I know that, isn't there something to the street signs like up the expressway? They get the brown sign that I think has, um, some meaning. I just didn't know if, I'm just wondering if there's not gonna be other opportunities on the common to communicate some of where we...
And I think that part would be important for people that visit the Creamy Whip or visit one of the concerts and would agree about, oh, I didn't know.
First, we talked about a possible map, um, to come to electrical.
I know the, there's a lot of...
Okay. Thank you for entertaining all of us.
Mr. Mayor.
Man.
Um, we had, uh, a laws and rules meeting and we presented to the council that we have reviewed charter document. We only made, uh, two suggestions to it. We wanted to make sure that we were aware that we were done with that. Um, the two suggestions that we were, um, that marked it was to, uh, mark the location of the commons by surrounding the, the names of the four streets around it and also for the, uh...
And, and what?
On the document, the charter document.
Charter.
Yeah, you, you handed it to laws and rules on the retreat day and we have already gone through it and I presented it to, um, council. Uh, and the other word that we suggested too was, um, Mr. Walterman on the zoning, um, uh, appointees to add the word staggered in it.
Oh, yeah.
Because, uh, it was to make it consistent with the other parts of that. Um, the other thing that we discussed was, um, an application for, uh, appointments, um, for official people that would be nominated to PNA commission and so forth. And perhaps to have that brought to council during the work session because oftentimes it doesn't happen all the time, but when it does happen, it's kind of like we're voting for something right away in, in that moment and we may or may not know the person. And, uh, we're going to have on the next council, uh, on the laws and rules committee, I will bring it back to council after we do that. Um, it's a suggested kind of application that someone will fill up and then pass it to the members of council so we'll be able to read something about that person and be familiar with it. And that includes my report. I mean, if you had a chance to check on that.
Good, good. Um, you know, I, I did wanna point out that August sixth, I think, is, would be the deadline for council to, um, vote to quit, um, any all, uh, the proposed charter amendments on the ballot for the November election, the days prior to the November election. So, um, any of those, uh, charter recommendations will have to be brought to council and that action, uh, completed before the sixth of August. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a small, uh, shouldn't be too tough goal.
Yeah, I think there's not much, there's gonna be changes.
There were only two changes that we suggested, that's all.
All right, fair enough. Is there anything else?
None at all.
All right.
No.
Couple of little things. Uh, I had golf course cleanup written down, uh, as something, um, but it wasn't about posts and, and rails and...
It's his volunteer thing you put out, isn't it, or Joel?
Um, no, it was just Bud and I, after the retreat, walked the golf course and, you know, there's a lot of branches and things down. And I don't know how that's typically done, but I, I didn't know if Joel has a plan or a time to...
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought he was doing a volunteer, um...
I saw something on volunteers.
Well, not, not the manning course, but I thought there was some talk about volunteer cleanup or something that...
I could, if, if we did it on a weekend, I could probably get a lot of those Thursday nights.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking like ten to two o'clock on a Saturday and, you know, you put three guys on a hole and you can do it.
Why didn't you call Joel and, and...
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe coordinate. So that was one thing. Um, this week I did attend a Hamilton County planning partnership meeting. It was, um, a convenient walk from my office, um, at the Moreline House, um, which was really appropriate what they had at that. No, there was no inviting.
Yeah, whatever.
Um, but it was really appropriate because the speakers were the two, it was a guy from the park who runs the Cincinnati Parks Commission and the head designer for all the bank stuff. And, um, if, if you haven't been down there, it is, I, I spent fifteen years laughing at it, thinking, they'll never get anything done here. This is the biggest boom, whatever. And, um, there is a lot happening down there and, um, it, Barb and I were down there on a Saturday night recently and...
I was gonna help you.
Yeah, you can't, if, if you wanna go to the Moreline House or one of those restaurants for dinner, you better get a reservation at least a week and a half in advance. Uh, you know, I, I called a week in advance to go to the Moreline House and they said, "We can get you in around ten o'clock." So I'm thinking, well, you better keep bringing a pillow and forget the cheeseburger or the, whatever I was gonna order. Um, so that was a good, um, I have started some preliminary work on, um, raises for our employees. We have some employees that haven't had raises in many years. Um, we don't have a lot of money to work with, but, um, I feel, uh, very strongly about getting some raises to folks. So, um, I'm working on that. We'll probably have a finance committee in early April and bring it to council for the April work session to discuss and then vote in May. And if we can get, uh, we can get a couple of people to join me on vote and affirmatively then make a raises effective to the version, so...
You don't have to take it yet for the, uh, the...
No, I gotta get with other members of the committee.
All right. And it's nothing to do with the meeting. You can go jerk now if you want, but, uh, just, just to piggyback on what you said about downtown. We took one of those duck tours. Uh, I'm a give or take on one of those. They drive around Cincinnati and they tell you a bunch of stuff and drive. You know, I didn't know, do you know that there's a section of the Berlin Wall behind the Underground Railroad Museum?
Yep.
I didn't know that. And there's a lot of other stuff I didn't know about my own city. I've lived here all my life and, uh, those are...
There's, there is a lot.
There is a lot to see in the... There is a lot to see and a lot to know and a lot to do.
We're actually having City Rama there next year.
With no Veron.
All right. Well, if there's nothing further for the work session, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go.
Is there a second? No objection, we stand adjourned.